It is 7:00 PM and welcome to the city of Iowa City. Formal meeting on January 19th, 2021. And I hope that you all had an awesome and amazing day yesterday celebrating the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And we are going to open us up with a roll call, please.
Fergus.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Sally.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, well, welcome, welcome, welcome. We have a item number two is a special presentation, a COVID update from Johnson County Public Health. Sam Jarvis was the Community Health Division Manager. Welcome, Sam.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us. Happy to provide an update where we're at as a community in terms of COVID-19. But I can imagine specifically around surrounding our vaccine planning efforts. So to give a quick recap, since September, we've been really dual-hatting our role in COVID disease investigations and vaccine planning. We were able to participate with a statewide planning group from September since then. And as every month and week has gone forward, we've learned a little bit more information as it slowly trickles out from our state and federal partners. Fast forward to December 14th, we were lucky enough to see the first dose of Iowa administered here in our very own backyard here in Iowa City at the University of Iowa hospitals and clinics. And even since then, December 14th, only 36 days roughly passed. More information continues to change daily if not or weekly, if not daily. But since then, since December 14th, Johnson County has been allocated roughly just north of 15,000 doses. And I'll distinguish that those are initial doses. And the reason why is because we expect to continue to receive our allocations for the second dose. And the state has gone ahead and planned that for us. And so really, it's not out of sight, out of mind, but for all intents and purposes, we can expect those. And so long as we're keeping track of where we are allocating, we just follow behind that same path that we've been taking. So really, you know, looking at 15,000 plus doses allocated to Johnson County to cover our very large Phase 1A population or healthcare workers and long-term care staff and residents. But since then, we have been monitoring several things. One of those are our allocation that we've received. The other is the federal pharmacy partnership that is serving our long-term care facilities, specifically skilled nursing facilities, assisted living. And there are several other facilities that have been able to enroll in that federal program. And since then, it's been, you know, sparse with some of the allocation that we've received week to week. But knowing, knowing that we've had or have a very large healthcare workforce here in Johnson County and knowing that there is somewhat of a commuter effect where there are many healthcare workers that work here in Johnson County but live elsewhere. We've expressed those concerns to the state where more than likely the initial planning numbers that the state had utilized based off of licensed data. And so really, you could read that as or hear that as where persons reside, where the licensed person resides. That those numbers would be an underestimate. And so this has occurred not just for Johnson County, but for other larger areas within the state of Iowa. And so several local public health agencies and their partners had also expressed that as well. So we're in good communication with the state on those issues and they've recognized that. And just as of the last week and a half, we've seen a small bump in our allocations. And so really thinking about what announcements were made this past week for the next priority phase that the state is anticipating to start February 1st, we are playing catch-up, so to speak, so that we can continue making good progress to vaccinate all of our healthcare workers going forward. So we can be ready for priority or the next Phase 1B to start. That's really the high-level overview where we're at now. I think the past couple of weeks, our team has reached out to several dozen, if not hundreds of individuals and organizations that are healthcare workers. We are being thoughtful in allocating to our large healthcare system organizations, but also making sure that we get doses for other healthcare facilities in Johnson County that are not affiliated with a large hospital. And so much of their time has been spent communicating with them and really looking to assist to prioritize. And part of our larger strategy is to utilize and leverage our partnerships with other COVID-19 vaccine providers, which Johnson County has many of. We're very fortunate and very grateful for those partnerships at our pharmacies and other facilities that are willing to provide vaccinations. And really, that is the overall strategy for the entire state and many other states as well, to have recruited other medical facilities to provide vaccinations. Because it cannot be done by one facility alone. It cannot be done by one large mass vaccination clinic. We recognize that with the vaccines that we have available to us today require a lot of logistics, let alone the fact that it's a two-dose series. The vaccines require very unique cold chain management. And so certainly, we want to be sure that those doses are being handled appropriately and being planned out appropriately so that there's no waste at all. So really, we've been referring to as a zero-waste strategy with our partners. And as soon as we are being allocated doses, we want those sent to our partners and knowing that they'll be used within the week or the next coming weeks. We do know that the state is looking at some soft metrics of doses allocated versus doses administered. So we've expressed to our partners that we will continue to allocate as quickly as possible throughout the county and to our partners with the expectation that we can administer those doses pretty quickly. So having said all of that, happy to take any questions and provide any clarity on what we've been working on in our steps forward for Phase 1B.
Sam, thank you very much for everything that you do. I just want to ask you because there is a question has been raised by a lot of people. Even though right now the vaccine is available for healthcare worker, I'm just asking when the vaccine become available for the public? And do you think that will cost money for the people who don't have insurance? Especially, I'm talking about low income who don't have insurance.
It should not. So there are instructions by the state where providers are not to charge or balance bill. There is an administrative fee that they can bill to insurances. But the, you know, obviously, if someone doesn't have insurance or uninsured, there are provisions for that. So that is, that is information that's available. And we certainly express it to our partners to make sure that that communication is given to all folks that they're serving.
Sam, once the other categories open up, how are people going to be scheduling appointments? Is there going to be information one on? I had somebody ask me this today who thought their section had opened up, which it sounds like it hasn't. But yeah, how are people going to be finding out where they, where they can get it and when they can get it?
We are solidifying a lot of that information this week with our partners. But what we hope to provide is a very methodical guidance somewhere. If you're, if you fall into one of those groups in the next priority Phase 1B, you don't know exactly where to go. We are wanting to make sure that all those priority populations are commence February 1st. If that's what the state chooses to do and that each group has very clear guidance on where to go. So that it's not, well, we've got 20 sites that can serve or vaccinate folks and just pick one and, you know, good luck. We're wanting to avoid that. We're wanting to avoid confusion, long lines. And so it will probably appear to be a pretty heavy hand on where persons can go. And we're doing our best to be thoughtful on access. But what we want to do is make sure that it's not confusing that people are able to, you know, in terms of either transportation and time, but also thoughtful in the sense that we are making sure that there's no competing interests, you know, one location because of good access and things like that. There are also other kind of guiding metrics that the state has released that, you know, 50% of the vaccine allocation is requested to be dedicated towards priority populations per age. Then the other certainly for underlying health conditions, which we can expect more guidance in the future. So again, those are kind of the softer metrics that we're looking at to what we've called load balancing, for lack of a better term.
Thank you so much and thanks to Johnson County Public Health for all that you all are doing. I know that I speak for our counselors and for Iowa City, where we really appreciate the opportunity to have the vaccine in our community. And it sounds like it's a, it is certainly a challenging effort that you all are doing, but you're navigating it to the best of your ability and making sure that the public is notified is, is going to be key. So thank you again.
Yeah, thank you. And a huge thanks to all of our partners who are vaccinating. You know, it has been a challenging and complex issue to navigate, but we're very appreciative of all the support that we receive. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are at our consent calendar, items three through eight. Could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move, Thomas.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, Thomas, seconded by Taylor. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I will call upon you. If you're on the phone, press star, star nine. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Fergus.
Yes.
I think, Yennis, do you want to comment on something?
You're faster than I am in terms of unmuting. You're faster, moving on, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on the, on the item. It was either, it's either 4B or 4C, which, which has to do with the CPRB recommendations to counsel that we requested in our, in our June 17-point resolution. Counsel really appreciates the enormous work that the CPRB has put into this. From my perspective, what I think would be one more step that I think would be very useful for counsel going forward would be to, for the CPRB's counsel to, to divide the recommendations into two groups. One, which can be, which the council and the city could consider, which are already legal to do, and one which would need further authorization, either from the state or for the state legislature. Someone else may have another comment on that, but that, that will make, that, that is the final step that will really allow us to approach this as we go forward as the council, knowing what we have the capacity to do right now.
Any other comments by counselors? Roll call, please.
Can I just ask a clarification question before we do roll call, Mayor? Do you want, is the council wanting that to be communicated to the CPRB?
I think it should be. I think that would be helpful.
I would agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number nine is community comment. This is an opportunity for those in the community that would like to address counsel to raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, press star nine. We ask that you keep your comments three to five minutes and please give your first and last name. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Mayor. Like the first comment on the budget session that y'all had a couple of weekends ago. I heard a few people use the phrase resource allocation when describing the new shelter house position. And want to be clear that that is absolutely not resource allocation. There, there can't be resource allocation when, in regards to the police budget, at least when you're increasing the police's budget and increasing their power. So the shelter house outreach position can be a good thing, but it's not necessarily a step forward, especially when Jeff Fruen has tied the position so closely to the police. As I believe I heard Mayor Proton bring up during that meeting, the folks using that service do not want that position to be closely tied to the police. But according to Fruen, it has to be closely tied and it absolutely doesn't need to be closely tied. I think there's no reason that we can't simply give more funding to shelter house without any strings attached and simply trust them to do the job that they're already doing. So this type of thing is not at all what people have been asking for and not what people were asking for when, when we were in the streets last summer. I'm also disappointed that the work session this evening didn't address some important details about the listening posts that you're proposing for the police plan. I think these upcoming listening sessions will have very little meaning unless counsel can come to terms with and discuss publicly the, the failure of the previous listening posts during the fall. Well over half of the in-person comments during the listening posts and at least half of the written submissions were completely ignored and discarded by the city manager and the proposals that we've seen. As Counselor Thomas noted two weeks ago, I believe, the proposal from the city manager just ignores the things that most of the folks were asking for during those listening sessions. So unless the council confronts that fact, and I mean, there's no reason for us to trust that all of a sudden our feedback is going to matter this time around. At the very least, if counsel could publicly debate and discuss why you're disregarding popular public opinion, that would mean something. And, you know, this, this kind of goes to say, as I've reflected on the last several months of the work of IFR since the summer, several members of the council seem to take pride in this like abstract idea that you're quote-unquote here to listen. But that listening is completely meaningless when you don't take a moment to consider that the thing you're hearing might have value that's worth acting on. This abstract idea of listening is proving to simply be an attempt to placate above all else. And like I said before, I want to point out that in, at least in my personal experience, I think Mayor Proton and Counselor Thomas are the two exceptions to this. And I just want to take this space to thank them again, not just for listening, but for seriously digging in, considering the value of some of the things that we've challenged and exploring some of the evidence with us. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We're going to hear from Nicholas, followed by Harry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, so I would second everything that David just said. In addition to that, as one of the few people who actually has read the city manager's proposal in its entirety, most of which could actually be discarded. I mean, I don't really think you needed to copy and paste the bylaws of the CPRB, but that's just my own like teacherly, like, you know, get rid of this crap. The thing that I specifically want to comment on, I mean, in addition to sort of the question of the disconnect, is to focus on something that actually Counselor Sally brought up last time. No, sorry, it was during the Saturday budget session, which is that in a lot of these situations, you are overvaluing. See, when you talk about particular situation, like say when a service worker goes to help a homeless person. I mean, Counselor Sally specifically said, like, well, what if the unhoused person doesn't want a cop there? I mean, there was a lot of emphasis on the fact that that's what the quote-unquote service providers want. But the thing is, if the point is to actually help somebody who is in need, shouldn't you actually be giving equal consideration, if not more consideration, to what they want the situation to look like rather than protecting the, to be perfectly frank, like petty insecurities of, you know, individual service providers? Really, it's the people's opinion that should matter more in that instance. And I actually read through all of the written submitted comments and then also the write-up of all of the, the verbal comments because I couldn't attend all the listing posts. And the thing is, City Manager Fruen's proposal doesn't reflect any of them. Even the people who weren't necessarily like on the side of the Iowa Freedom Riders, the thing that City Manager Fruen produced doesn't actually match what they were asking for. And so I really kind of wonder who is this for? Because it really doesn't seem to actually be for the people that it's supposed to help. Isn't that really the point? Isn't it supposed to be for us? Isn't it supposed to be for the community? Why is it for all of these like abstract principles or like, you know, as I said, like protecting the petty insecurities of service workers? Like if they have a hard time doing, I mean, the thing is, I'm a teacher. Like I have had to deal with these issues myself in the past. I don't get to like bring a cop into my classroom if a student, you know, is behaving improperly and basically let the cops stand over them until they behave. I actually have to find a kind, just, and really just sympathetic way to deal with their problems. And that is what we should be demanding of our service workers, not this. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Harry, followed by Amelia.
Hi, my name is Harry Monaligood. I want to talk to you today about a man named Patrick Warren, who was killed by police earlier this month. Patrick Warren suffered from some pretty severe mental health problems. One day, he was having a mental health episode and his son called for a mental health officer. In previous cases, when his family called for a mental health officer, that's exactly what they got. A professional specifically trained to deal with these situations. Somebody who is actually invested in helping the mentally ill. However, on January 10th, when they called for a mental health officer, they received a police officer. His son is heard on video telling the police officer not to go near his father with a gun on his person and asked him to leave the property. Patrick Warren's son knew what his father needed, but this police officer did not know. This police officer responded to a mental health crisis by killing Patrick Warren. This case happened in Texas, but this kind of thing happens every day. According to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, about half of all victims of police brutality have a disability. People with mental illnesses are 16 times more likely to be a victim of police brutality. I'm talking about this today because point number six in this joke of a proposal attempts to address this issue. But like the rest of this proposal, it doesn't do anything to stop police brutality. While point number six tries to address mental health crises with trained professionals, it requires that a police officer ride along with said mental health professional. I believe that this is not enough to deal with the problem of officers having the ultimate discretion in these cases and that it would be better if mental health professionals could do these jobs without police. If police are guaranteed to ride along with these professionals in every single case, who is to stop them from killing people when they behave erratically? This proposal is a joke. And I, I'd also just like to echo everything that was said by those who spoke earlier. I think a lot of people in the city council, particularly Laura Fergus, I saw you mention this yesterday, use all these phrases about, oh, we hear you, like you're being heard. But like, you know, like I saw every job that I ever work at put up signs that said, you're seen, you're heard and stuff like that in their windows. But half of these jobs that I worked at, there were no black employees, like. And this, it's the same thing with the city council. You're saying that you hear us, but like, guess what? You're not listening. You're not doing the actions that we're telling you that you need to do. So you're really not hearing us and like, it would be just nice if you could find like a new phrase to like cover up your complete apathy with. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Amelia, welcome.
Hi, city council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Um, I am, once, I would also just like to second everything that everybody else has said already. But I am once again speaking up about the proposed police budget from the city manager. I'm completely against raising the police budget as we have been since May 2020, as you all know. It's very disappointing that we have to fight like this against the budget. It's disappointing that this budget was even proposed, to be quite frank. I would appreciate it if we could all take a look at a program set up by the city of Denver, Colorado called the STAR Program Support Team Assisted Response. In this article by the Denver Post, they explain the workings of the STAR Program. They send mental health professionals along with paramedics to respond to a variety of 911 calls instead of police. They have multiple vans that they use that are stocked with necessities like food, water, juice, clothing, socks, undergarments, coats, medical supplies, and et cetera, things that people may need. Since its start on June 1st, 2020, the STAR van has responded to over 350 calls in Denver. The team is unarmed and have not had to call for backup once. I think this program is a very good example of what the Iowa City community is looking for. We do not want armed police officers in our communities and we definitely do not want them at the shelter house. During the listening post in the fall, over half of the total feedback advocated for a cahoots-type program, which is exactly what Denver is doing. Yet the city manager went behind closed doors to, for a co-respondent model, which is direct opposite of the feedback you all received. A study by the, a study done by the National Violent Death Reporting System found that between 2009 and 2012, black Americans disproportionately made up 32% of deaths due to lethal force from law enforcement, with the fatality rate of 2.8 times higher among black people than white people. Black victims were also most likely to be unarmed, 14.8% than white people, 9.4%. 22% of cases were mental health-related, 18% were suspected to be suicide by cop and 6% made up unintentional death by law enforcement. We as a community want to prevent all deaths caused by law enforcement as well as any police brutality and further prevent these deaths and violence from ever happening in our community. A huge part in ending these situations is giving aid to our community. Another great reason to defund the police. So once again, I'm asking that we fund the amazing mutual aid groups we have, community programs that we have in our city. As Dr. Cornel West once said, "America needs a massive reinvestment in poor communities, especially black communities." So while this is being fought for on a much larger scale here in America, it also needs to be fought for on a much smaller scale here in our backyards and cities. This is precisely what IFR and the people speaking up are trying their very best to do. So once again, I'm demanding city council deny the budget and start listening and including IFR and their constituents in this community. You can say you are listening to us all you want, but the facts and actions say it all. And it says that IFR is being completely shut off, shut out of all decisions. As someone once said, "You lessen crime by eliminating poverty. You lessen crime with universal healthcare, public housing, strong unions, high wages, universal childcare, free and free education. You lessen crime by creating happy, healthy communities that don't have to struggle and fight over material resources." So I guess basically, yeah, that's just all we're asking for. We really, really demand to be heard. This is our city. I'm sure most of people like myself have lived here their whole lives or have lived here for a large portion of their lives. And I feel like we, we should have control over what happens in our city and not just a few people on city council who ignore us. So yeah, I'm asking that you guys please reject this stupid police budget. Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to address counsel? If so, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, press star nine. Welcome, Joanne. You're on mute. Your hand is not up anymore. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, I really am just completely confused and flabbergasted as to why, after everything that's happened in the last year and all of the voices from the community that have stated that this is basically the complete opposite of what they want in their community. Why would this budget is even coming up in the first place? It just seems like there isn't any listening to what is the community actually wants in terms of the role of police and also the amount of resources that are allocated to the police. But also, we're asking for more money and more resources being brought to things that help treat the reasons that people end up, you know, involved in the, involved in the justice system in the first place. I don't think that this proposal will do anything to address police brutality. There are a lot of issues I have mainly, you know, what am I trying to say? I don't think this proposal does anything to address the overuse of force. The, the amount of resources that be, should be allocated to subseduced professionals and social workers. I know that there's a allocation for mental health professionals, but they have to be supervised by police. And I think that doesn't help anything. The increasing militarization of the force and also bias in police. The increasing militarization of the force and also bias in police profiling. I think that this money could be allocated in a way that helps the community a lot more, and and those resources could be used in a much more beneficial way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Welcome, Bailey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I would like to agree with what everyone else has said so far. I think community members are making it abundantly clear that continuing to increase the police budget is not what the people want, especially when you're considering that the city of Iowa City has put out this list, what, what they're doing for the Black Lives Matter and systemic racism resolution. And then you are increasing the police budget at similar levels to the public library, which is a useful community tool and resource for everyone. And then the efforts you are making, yes, you are requiring a police to ride along, and yes, I hope that you I guess, yeah, I just think that you guys should scrap this. I do not agree with you increasing the police budget, and I hope you listen to your constituents.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council during this time? Seeing no one. We are going to move on to item 10, which is planning and zoning matters. 10A rezoning 700, 710, 720, and 730 South Dubuque Street and 220 Lafayette Street. Ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 1.9 acres of land located at 700, 710, 720, 730 South Dubuque Street, and 2020 Lafayette Street. From a community commercial and an intensive commercial to riverfront crossing, central crossing zone. I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood Development Services. This is an application from Gilbane Development for a request to rezone several parcels shown outlined in white here on your screen, including those addresses you just enumerated, for a total of just under two acres. The rezoning, as you said, would be from some existing commercial zones to the riverfront crossings for a base code district appropriate for this location. This shows the properties in the vicinity that have already been rezoned to riverfront crossings for a base code districts in blue. So directly to the north is a hodge project that has redeveloped in essentially that entire northern block. To the west side of this project, there's a portion of the block that has been redeveloped, and to the northeast across the railroad tracks and along the Ralston Creek. There is also another project that was recently rezoned, but has not yet been constructed. That one was previously requested under the capstone name. This rezoning, as I mentioned, would rezonate from some existing commercial districts to commercial districts, which are really focused on more intensive commercial uses, generating a large traffic, perhaps in maybe a big box form, formulation, possibly also including outdoor sales and storage, to what is essentially more of a mixed-use district with design standards built into it. And that is our form-based code for the West River, or for the Riverfront Crossings District. The proposed rezoning would be Central Crossings. That's one of the sub-districts in the form-based code. That's the area on the regulating plat, plan that's identified for this area. It generally allows for moderate intensity, as I said, mixed-use development. And the uses are not regulated as much as the form of the, of the development. So most of the uses supported in our central business district are allowed anywhere in the form-based code district. The form-based code district at Central Crossings does not have maximum density requirements. Again, I said this is more of a form-related or rather than uses, and it does have some base maximum heights that I know have been interest, of interest in the past. So I'll just mention the base maximum height for this district, Central Crossing, Central Crossings is four stories, and there is a potential for bonus height requests up to a total of eight stories. In this case, the applicant has not indicated they would seek the maximum bonus, but they have expressed an interest in two additional stories of bonus height for their concept development. There are different levels of review for different amounts of height. If they were to continue to pursue that six-story concept, that would simply require staff review and not city council review. As with all rezonings, we review two key components, those being compliance with the comprehensive plan and compatibility with the existing neighborhood. In regards to compliance with the comprehensive plan, the subject property here is shown in this exhibit from the master plan in the bottom left-hand corner of the screen in the white outline. As I mentioned, some other properties in the vicinity have also redeveloped since this plan was developed, and don't look exactly like this master plan has envisioned. However, in general, the concepts of the master plan were formulated into our form-based code and are expresses zoning code regulations and and would regulate the kind of development on this property as it proceeds. As I mentioned, they're interested at this point in a six-story concept. In regards to the master plan and some of the goals expressed there, this property in particular abuts the Ralston Creek, and so we look to the master plan goals for eventual improvements to Ralston Creek to naturalize and help improve stormwater controls in a more natural way. And the applicant has actually proposed to restore and enhance conditions along the subject property eastern boundary, which is the Ralston Creek. Included in this recommendation were several conditions formulated by staff and recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to those improvements to Ralston Creek. This image is a view of the hodge property directly to the north of this property, looking actually in this view back south towards the subject property, showing how others in the form-based code district have also contributed to improvements of Ralston Creek. Staff is also looking into the possibility of providing a connection between this development and the subject development tonight that's under rezoning consideration. It would have to be a connection made underneath the railroad bridge. The applicant would not be responsible for that at this time, but they would be providing a connection, much like the hodge property did along their property to allow for the eventual connection as staff continues to work towards that goal. Again, in compliance with the comprehensive plan, this rezoning would build upon ongoing efforts to improve the quality residential design by updating the existing housing stock in the subject area under that form-based code. And by keeping the conceptual development at or about six stories, the proposed use would not be out of scale or overly intensive with respect to the surrounding area. And the applicant's packet, I believe they showed a pretty good visual image of the representation of their concept in comparison to nearby properties also taking a grade into consideration. And the proposed rezoning would also contribute, as I said, to that scale, but also other goals for increasing residential density in and around our existing railroad system. If that should ever be another mode of transportation that would be revitalized, this would be appropriate residential development next to transit. In regards to compatibility with the existing neighborhood, again, the areas shown in blue here are areas that have already taken advantage of and complied with our form-based code district and the planning effort that has gone into formulating that for this area. And just looking at where this project lays in its progression through a potential redevelopment, shown here in dark black is the rezoning that's under consideration tonight. Proceeding that was, of course, the development of a master plan in 2013 and the implementation of that master plan through the formulation and adoption of our form-based codes. Following a rezoning, there's a vacation of an alleyway that would need to be executed before they could proceed on to any kind of actual development. And then the review of their concept would proceed to an actual design review and site plan review conducted by staff, and the eventual issuance of building permits. So the Planning and Zoning Commission does recommend approval of this rezoning application. Staff proposed two conditions, which they also supported. The first of which has to deal with the particulars of improvements to Ralston Creek, ensuring that the improvements are in keeping with past improvements and trying to naturalize that corridor. And the second condition having to do with providing access for utility and infrastructure that needs to either be relocated or continued to be accessed. Because of COVID, a good neighbor in-person meeting was not held, but the applicant did send out an additional mailing to Good Neighbor Notification Area, offering to explain their project, and they did receive comments based on that. So that concludes staff report. Again, this is coming to you with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Danielle? All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Welcome, Michael.
Hello, Mayor Teague and council. My name is Mike Welch with Acxiom Consultants, and just wanted to let you know that myself, along with Mike Apt from Gilbane Development, are present tonight. If there are any councils for, for Mike and myself, any questions for Mike or myself, we can answer those.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic during public discussion? During the public hearing? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to give first consideration? One second, before we do that. I want to see if our councillors are inclined to go with the P and Z. I'm seeing the majority. Yes. All right. Can I get a motion for first consideration?
They'll move, Ms.
Second, Sally.
All right. And council discussion?
Before we get into the discussion, I didn't get in, I wanted to ask one question. And that is, do we have a rough estimate of the number of dwelling units in this proposed project?
Mayor, the applicant is here, so if they'd like to address that, I think that'd be appropriate.
And welcome, Michael.
Yes. Hi, my name is Michael Apt with Gilbane Development Company, and I appreciate council reviewing our proposal. We're excited about the project and being a part of the Iowa City community. To answer your question, we're still undergoing design, but we are somewhere around 240 to 250 units.
Thank you.
Councilor Ms., your mic is muted.
Sorry, thank you. Went the wrong direction. I just, to me, this is just a natural kind of expansion of that rezoning to riverfront crossings. For those people who don't remember, the city actually initiated a rezoning of about 20-plus acres, I believe, when we first developed the riverfront crossings area. And that rezoning was at the city's initiation, and since then, it's been individual property owners who have gradually expanded the amount of land that is under that zoning. So it's glad to see and not surprised that we're seeing more and more area in there get converted over to this zoning.
I just, I just have a few comments. One, one would be, it's certainly encouraging to see, to see Ralston Creek, and when we have these projects that border the creek, that the creek improvements are part of the scope. One comment I would have on the design, I know there's been, has to do with the, the size of the building, not, not in terms of its height. It's, this is a six-story building. You know, those who've been following this conversation on council know that I'm generally very supportive of buildings that fall into that mid-rise height. The question or concern I have has to do with the size of the building in terms of its being a block, a block form building, taken to all four corners of the block. It's, as I look at the drawings, one building. The, you know, if you were to look at the comp plan, the comp plan, you know, the illustrative of the comp, comp plan has four buildings that make up that block. The, the concern I have really isn't driven by aesthetics. It's driven more by the adaptability of the building to various uses over time. And how, when you build one large building, if that use, which in this case is student housing, if the market for that should shift, how adaptable is that building form to other forms of occupancy in this case? My belief would be that if we had not very small buildings, but smaller buildings, so for example, the building across Dubuque Street there near the tracks, that scale of a building, it would give us more flexibility and adaptability in terms of how those, how, how this area of riverside crossings is occupied, so that it could accommodate, in the future, different occupants, not necessarily all students, for example. With a large building like this, that's oriented toward students, I'm concerned about the flexibility of that moving forward. So that, that is the kind of thing, you know, we had talked about revisiting riverfront crossings after Opticos came into town. The, the fact that we're seeing very large-scale buildings, meaning occupying blocks, is something that I feel is, is something we should be considering as we move forward with future development.
I'm going to be supportive of this, but I would have to agree with Councilor Thomas when it comes down to the use of the building and making it, making sure that it's adaptable for more than just students. I think that's something the developers need to really consider. The conditions that the staff have presented in, in this project I'm supportive of, and so I'll support this tonight. All right.
I, I was just going to mention that I do have concerns about the design of the building also, and how it really fits into the neighborhood, of the neighborhood's becoming a lot of the student housing. But I think as far as rezoning it to riverfront crossings, it does make sense to do that. So I would be in favor of that rezoning.
All right. Here are no more comments. Roll call, please.
Ms.
Yes.
Celi.
Yes.
Taylor. Taylor.
Yes.
Thanks. Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10B, rezoning 410 and 412 North Clinton Street. Ordinance rezoning property located at 410, 412 North Clinton Street from high-density multifamily residential to RM 44 with a historic district overlay. And this is second consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So move, Thomas.
All right. Public discussion. Would anyone like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand.
Did we get a second, Mayor?
I'll second it, Ms.
Okay.
Great. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one. And actually, staff has requested expedited action on this item. And councilor members, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm not on top of my game tonight. I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, to be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second by Weiner. All right, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Celi.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
They moved.
Second, Thomas.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10C, rezoning at 400 North Clinton Street and 112 East Davenport Street. Ordinance conditionally resounding approximately 12,000 square feet of land located at 400 North Clinton Street and 112 East Davenport Street to plan high-density multifamily residential zone. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So move, Thomas.
Second, Sally.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
You're on mute, Counselor Thomas. You're still on mute.
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10D, zoning code amendment, PRM zone bonus provisions ordinance. Ordinance to amend Title 14 zoning to allow minor adjustments in planned high-density multifamily residential zones for new construction projects which involve preserving a separate historic structure. Motion to pass and adopt.
Move.
Second, Weiner.
Great. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11 Mercer Aquatic Center pool dehumidification system improvements. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Mercer Aquatic Center who dehumidification, dehumidification system improvements project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid directing city clerk to post notice to bidders and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. And staff presentation, please.
Welcome in.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Ben Clark. I work in the engineering division. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Can you all see that?
Yes.
So I'll just give you a quick rundown of the project. It's, um, the main purpose of the project is to replace some aging HVAC equipment. And it's going to accomplish three things besides replacing old equipment. It'll upgrade the space and make it code compliant as far as air exchanges go. It'll improve the air quality of the room, especially from what they tell me, right above the surface of the pool, it'll, it'll move air more uniformly across for the swimmers. And then it'll also remove moisture from the room, which will help kind of preserve the life of some of the fixtures and electrical work in the room. There are two alternates. One is an exterior duct product that we'd like to use if we can get a good price. And then the second add alternate will be a new air handler unit that for, that goes over the hot tub area. So location of the project, it's at the Mercer Scanlon Gym. If you're not familiar with that facility, the large area is the natatorium where the swimming pool is located. It'll be a large exterior dehumidification unit on the southwest corner of the property. And this is just an overview of the plan. It's a little hard to read, but a couple of things I should point out. One is the dehumidification unit will be outside. It's, it's rather large. The duct work will go up through the air and into the building here around, and it'll provide makeup air all the way to the south end of the building. And this is the second thing I want to point out is this large piece of duct work across here. This is a cut sheet and it's, it's a little hard to see, but this blue thing will be a large piece of duct work that currently there is no duct work there now. So it'll be hanging down from the ceiling. So it'll look a little bit different in there. The exterior of the building, you'll see a large unit down on the southwest corner. And the rendering of that. And then we've got just a schedule. So we're looking to take bids and award the contract next month. When we do award the contract, we'll have another item in front of council, and that's to procure the dehumidification unit through a cooperative purchasing agreement. And that'll allow us to save, save a little bit of money, but more importantly, it'll help speed up the schedule because we can get it, start getting it fabricated. So we anticipate starting the outside work in July. That's when the unit will show up on site. They can start the inside work in August, should be done in September, and then hopefully have it open for the winter for folks to use. So total project costs come in about 875,000. And that's, that's kind of the end of my presentation. Are there any questions?
No questions. Sound like a, a great opportunity though, and needed. All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. And motion to approve.
So move.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 12 Mercer Aquatic Center Masonry and Skylight Repairs. Resolution approving project manual and an estimate of cost for the construction of the Mercer Aquatic Center Masonry and Skylight Repairs Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid directing city clerk to post notice to bidders and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome again, Ben.
Okay, we've got one more same, same location. This project will do a little bit of work to fix up the masonry and clean up some of the rusted lintels. And then it'll also repair some of the skylights over the atrium. They've, they've done some damage to the interior drywall. And we've got one bid alternate, and that's to, to replace the entire skylight system rather than just try to repair the seals. So a quick, quick overview of the building. You can see the skylights over the atrium in this location. The tuck pointing will happen around the exterior of the building and also in the interior, just in spot locations where it's needed.
Hey, Beth, if you're trying to share your screen, we're not, we're not seeing it.
Not seeing it. Can you see that?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
A overview of the building. You can see the, the atrium and skylights are in this area. And we've got masonry repairs around the exterior and also in the interior of the building, just in select locations. This is an example of the efflorescence that needs to be repaired. You can see a little bit of white staining here. So they'll clean that off and then they'll go in and seal the expansion joints above it to keep the moisture out. Close up view of the skylights, you can kind of see, see how the panels are put together. So a lot of the seals between these panels are leaking. This is kind of a close up example of the sealant's dried out, got a bent bracket. You've also got some rusting and staining on the lintels above the windows. And here's a view of the interior. You can see some, some damage to these acoustical panels. So those will get, once they stop the leaking, they'll clean those up, damage to some of the drywall. And that's basically the project. Looking at taking bids next month, starting in May and finishing July. And the total project cost would be 161. Any questions?
Here are no questions. Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. I will call upon you. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So move, Weiner.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Council discussion.
We just need to keep our buildings in good shape and so that the lot, the more maintenance we do like this, the longer they'll last for the community.
Roll call, please.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 13 Human Rights Ordinance Update. Ordinance amending Title II of the City Code entitled Human Rights to update methods of service allowed. Staff request expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended. The second consideration vote be waived and the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
All right. And I see Stephanie Bowers. Hello.
Good evening. So this is just a simple amendment to the human rights ordinance that will allow staff to send documents via email or personal service. Currently, due to the pandemic, parties involved in the complaints have not always promptly received documents that we're sending to them. And so this will allow us to continue to investigate complaints and get them resolved in a timely manner.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Stephanie? All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Celi? Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
They moved, Mims. Second, Weiner.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Celi?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 14 TIF Agreement for College Street Redevelopment. Resolution approving agreement for a private redevelopment by and between the City of Iowa City, Iowa, Tailwind College Street LLC and Tailwind College Street Iowa City LLC. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Fergus.
Second, Sally.
All right, and welcome, Wendy Ford.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Wendy Ford, Economic Development Coordinator for the city, and let me start sharing my screen here. Has it popped up yet?
Yes, we see it.
Okay, good. Well, I've got a compelling list for you to read to start off with. Number one, historic preservation of some of Iowa City's beloved commercial architecture. A new home for Riverside Theater. Lively commercial activity in every storefront day and night. Lead Gold certified new construction and a $1.9 million influx into the Affordable Housing Fund. These are the public benefits that come with the Tailwind Redevelopment Project in the West Wing of the Ped Mall. The Tailwind Group began working on this project when they purchased their first building there in 2017. They have since acquired all the buildings on the block except for the savings and loan building on the west end, which is not part of the project. They are proposing a TIF-funded redevelopment with public benefits that honor all of the changes in the TIF policies that were made in 2017 and which are detailed in the memo in your packet. First off, Tailwind will be designated the crest, designating the Crescent and Dooley Block Buildings as local historic landmarks and will make renovations and repairs to existing building exteriors and interior spaces. The College Block has been listed on the National Register since 1973, so that won't be included in your vote later this evening. The value of landmark designation to the community is that it essentially guarantees the buildings will exist in perpetuity and preserve this treasured row of storefronts forever. Without this designation, developers would be free to demolish the buildings and by rights rebuild any building that would comply with the zoning code. For decades, this block of College Street was home to three of the largest college bar, college bars in the state. While business was brisk at night, lights were off and doors were locked during the day, making for an unnecessarily quiet section of the Ped Mall. And try as they might, when these spaces came open for rent, owners struggled to find tenants who could lease and reuse the gargantuan spaces. The developers planned to reinvigorate the block by right sizing the large spaces to allow small businesses to occupy storefronts more economically. And to do that, a key piece of that is to remove the back sections of the building and divide the Union Bar side of the Crescent Block into two smaller storefronts, keeping revive, the revival space on the west and retrofitting the old soap opera space with a box office for the theater upstairs and an ADA accessible entry into the building and access to a new elevator. So this view here shows the Crescent Block. That's a Union Bar Building, and we're, we're actually looking at it from behind. And you can tell right off the bat how huge that building is. So down on the first floor, the, the right half of the building, which has been the Union Bar all these years, will be divided in half for two retail uses. And about a little left, a little right on the other side of middle will be that old soap opera entry, as we call it, and then revival will be moving back into their same space, in their same space there. Supporting the effort to make Iowa City the greatest mall city for the arts, Tailwind will build a new state-of-the-art home for Riverside Theater with a lobby area seating and a stage on third floor of the Crescent Block, the Union Bar Building, a shop and storage on the second floor. And an interesting side note, I realized this when I was doing some research, that this will be Iowa City's second theater above ground floor in Iowa City. More than 100 years ago, the Cauldron Opera House was located on the corner in what is now the savings and loan building, and they had retail and commercial offices on first floor and their theater, 1,000 seat theater was located on second and third floors above. So a precedent has been, been set. The tail, the theater and Tailwind have negotiated a deeply discounted rent, which does have an impact on the financial gap in the project. But as you know, Iowa City's support for the arts and cultural resources has great precedence. Capital expenses such as these are, these are similar to those the city has supported in the past between Engler Film Scene, PS1, and the type of businesses that truthfully create the foundation for one of the strongest art scenes in the nation for a city of our size. Plans for 111 East College Street, the former Field House, or if you're old enough Sears, include the expansion by a local restaurateur and brewery operator Jim Mondanero of the Reunion Brewery. Incorporated into the space would be a five, five vat brewery, adding to the reunion's other two brewing locations in Correville and Iowa. Incorporated into the space would be a five, five vat brewery, adding to the reunion's other two brewing locations in Correville and Iowa City. Most of the brewery restaurant revenues would come from the restaurant, which will offer a full menu all day, every day. Hours of operation would begin before noon and close late on the weekends, boosting both daytime Ped Mall activity and in the, into the evening. And then to facilitate the later hours proposed by the operator, staff is working with the Iowa City Downtown District. On a proposal that would allow some eating establishments, meeting certain operating and management requirements to stay open past midnight. Such a proposal will come to you sometime early in twenty twenty-one. There will be a new tenant for the Martinis location, two new tenants in the Union Bar space and possible new tenants in the Greys and Giovanni's or El Patron locations. Revival will return to their existing location. There'll be four existing one bedroom apartments above Martinis and those will remain, along with two above the Greys location. And four new one bedroom apartments will be built on the second floor of the Crescent Building. That will share that floor with the theater, their office and work space for the theater. The removal of the rear half of the Crescent and Dooley Buildings makes way for the addition of a new one hundred and two unit multifamily building to the south. Behind the existing buildings. It will also require the repair and changes to the backs of buildings where portions were, were removed. And we included this slide to show you that the below where the red dash line is will be the demarcation line for, for demolition of the old parts of the building. And the gray areas in the top up here are the areas that'll need attention with new windows, doors and, and outfitting the backs of those buildings. So that they are appropriate looking into a courtyard that they'll, that they'll face. And this is a plan view, which again shows you the relative sizes of the buildings on the north side and the new building plan for the back. And then the courtyard space that will be between. The new building will be built Lead Gold certified and include apartments on nine upper floors over two floors of parking with a building height matching the hotel next door. Knowing shadows have been a concern in the past, the architects have done a shadow study, a scene in this slide. So with a little bit of study, and it did take me a little while, you can see that during the spring, summer and fall. Any shadow created by the new building falls no further into the Ped Mall than the roof of the old buildings. So that's these lines here. When the sun is its lowest during the winter, the shadow cast by the old buildings has always completely covered the Ped Mall. So with that precedent set, this new building will also shade the Ped Mall from sun. But there will be no net loss in sunshine due to the new building in that location. Newman Monson has provided these interesting graphics that help us understand the relative size of the building. And, and we'll walk through these from the upper left. Imagine standing next to Utopia and looking down towards the library in that direction, towards the east. The little red arrows point to the portions of the building that you're able to see from these various vantage points. So not much from Utopia, though you move down into the Ped Mall a little bit. And across from the old Field House where we are here. You can see what is probably about three, the top three stories of, of the building above and beyond, above and behind. And note that you can't, you wouldn't be able to see that unless you were about as far away from those storefronts across the Ped Mall. As you're, as you're standing, you would not be able to see them when you were much closer to the buildings across and closer in the Ped Mall. And this is walking along here in the lower left. This is looking across to the Crescent Building. That one's a taller building, so you see less of the new building behind it. And switching just a little further left across from the Martinis Building there, because that one's shorter. You can begin to see the new building peeking out above it. And to the right, a vantage point that looks from a little further away, but again, over the Martinis Building. Showing the new building above. Developers sought the attractive combination of a Lead Gold certified building and the preservation of existing buildings. To ensure that future, future generations enjoy the historic nature of this block while providing highly energy efficient new housing in the city center. TIF policies require a minimum of Lead Silver certified and with at least eight points awarded for optimized energy performance credits. To ensure that our TIF projects help meet our, the city's carbon emission reduction goals. Open space requirements will be met by providing a courtyard and courtyard, courtyard amenities between the new buildings and the old buildings on the north side. And imagine if you can, we're standing in this view here, number three, lower left. In front or south of the Graduate Hotel, looking back towards the back of the Martinis Building. This will be an entryway, a courtyard entryway that will be the space between those two buildings there. And the space that will also be used to satisfy the open space requirements for the building. Skipping up to the top left here, you're standing in front of the Hot House Yoga on Clinton Street looking, this would be northeast. And you can see the top few floors of the building there. The area with the biggest view of the building is probably from here on Clinton's, or sorry Burlington Street. This would be between the mill on the right there, that sort of yellowish wood building. And this is the Starbucks building here. So biggest, biggest view there, at least for the time being of that building from, from Burlington Street. Developers of housing granted TIF are required to provide fifteen percent of the units as affordable at or below the sixty percent area median income level. By one of three methods to help the city reach affordable housing goals. They can either provide those units onsite, offsite, pay a fee in lieu, or use a combination of these options to meet that requirement. Using feedback from the EDC, the Economic Development Committee. The Tail, Tailwind has proposed to pay the fees in lieu, which for this project will amount to more than one point nine million dollars. And fund a program that will be proposed in the twenty twenty-one Affordable Housing Plan. That support, that will support affordable housing in the near downtown area. Let's get back here. In August of twenty nineteen, the Tailwind Group first shared ideas they had for the redevelopment project with the Economic Development Committee. Which was then a more costly sixty-five million dollar project with a nine million dollar TIF request. At that time, they proposed Lead Silver certification for the new building, but had not yet determined how they wanted to provide the affordable housing. They also had received favorable comments from the EDC and they were asked to refine their numbers. Determine how to solve the affordable housing requirement and to prepare for the city's due diligence process, improving the nine million dollar need. About a year later, in July of twenty twenty, Tailwind returned to the EDC with many refinements. Including a lower total project cost of sixty-one million dollars, but a higher TIF request of thirteen point five million. Some costs had decreased, but more had increased. The developer knew of the strong appeal for Lead certification and was now proposing Lead Platinum versus Silver for the new building. They had also designated more spaces with a more complete build out for the theater. Those costs. Excuse me, those costs coupled with the higher operational costs of providing discounted lease rates of more space to the nonprofit also added to the expense. The cost of meeting the affordable housing requirement had also not been yet fully accounted for in earlier presentations. A big concern was the hefty increase in the cost from, of going from Lead Silver to Lead Platinum between the first and second presentations. Developers and their architects reexamine those costs and were able to reduce them considerably by going from Platinum to the now proposed Lead Gold certified, which still exceeds TIF policy. There had also been discussion about which method developers would use to comply with the affordable housing requirement. And while one EDC member liked the idea of a mix of onsite and offsite affordable units. Two others like the idea of increasing affordable units in the near downtown area. An idea that could be realized by using funds generated by the fees in lieu. So a proposal for the use of these funds will be included in the twenty-one, in the twenty twenty-one Affordable Housing Plan. So after all the refinements, we have a project of fifty-six point four million dollars. To fund it, developers have secured the maximum debt they can of thirty-five point eight million. And are contributing a required equity of eleven point six million, which leaves a nine million dollar gap to be filled with a private loan. Then to repay, excuse me, to repay the private gap loan. The develop, the developer is requesting twelve and a quarter million dollars in TIF rebates over fifteen years. We had engaged the National Development Council to do the financial analysis and confirm the gap, which they did. The memo from whom you have in your packet. Using their analysis, staff then negotiated with the developer for fifteen years of TIF rebates to fill that private gap loan. So for those in our audience who may not be familiar with TIF, just a couple of points to, to go over that. It is a method of reallocating property taxes that have been paid by the developer that result from an increase in property value. The increase in value creates the increment to which a TIF levy is applied. And that TIF levy is granted back in, in TIF rebates in this case. And it, it's worth reiterating that developers pay all property taxes due. And rebates are only derived from a portion of those taxes. So TIF rebates only happen if the project is a success and meets the goals set forth in the, in the metric set forth in the development agreement. The city has been involved in a number of TIF agreements over the years and each one is a little different. The difference in this one is that the formula for the TIF rebate changes after the first eight years. The first eight years of rebates are figured at one hundred percent of the tax increment. And the final seven years are figured at seventy-five percent of the tax increment created by that increase in value. This chart shows how this TIF would work. The gray areas in the bottom of the stacks are the taxes that come in on the value of the property. See the first column? That one, that represents the taxes that right now currently come in from all those old buildings, the storefronts along the front of that block. Those will continue to flow to the city, the county and the schools even after the tip, every TIF. Everything in the gray there continues to flow through to the city, the county and the schools. Then look at the next column. This is when the new value is added to the tax base and the, and also when the TIF starts. The new value comes mainly from the new multifamily building on the south side of this project. The black section in the bar chart above the gray are new taxes that are derived from the protected debt levy, which kicks in with a TIF. And I know I'm getting a little technical at this point, but it is important to show that between the gray existing base value and the black protected debt levy. Our taxing jurisdictions, the city, the county, schools, et cetera, will immediately begin to see an increase in, or they'll be realizing the increase in, in property taxes because of the TIF project. The red then is the portion of the property taxes that are rebated to the developer. And after the eight year of rebates, the developer will only receive seventy-five percent, and I've noted that in the bars, seventy-five percent of that tax increment. And then the other twenty-five percent will get added to the gray, the part the city, the county and the school keep. So that's that jump there specifically in year, year nine. In a nutshell, the reduction in TIF rebates from one hundred to seventy-five percent in year nine means that twenty-five percent of the new property taxes will be added to the base taxes. And to the protected debt levies already flowing to those entities, allowing them to benefit from the increase in the value during the TIF term. It's also really important to note that if the combined rebates fall short of twelve and a quarter million dollars over fifteen years. That risk remains with the developer, not the city. So the memo in your packet also includes several of the procedural steps that have been taken, required to get this project to this point. You'll recall that the urban renewal area for downtown was amended in October. The historic preservation reviewed and conditionally approved a certificate of appro, of appropriateness for the changes to the existing older buildings. The Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed an application, but the, for the historic landmark designation. But the developers requested that to come right after this item on your agenda for probably obvious reasons. The Board of Adjustment has approved a special exception for a reduction in parking. And staff is working on proposed language for conditional use through a special exception that would grant this late night eating certificate. That we talked about where certain conditions, if certain conditions were met by certain operators. They would be able to stay open and serve food until after midnight. And then finally, this comes to you with a recommendation from the Economic Development Committee, which approved it for a recommendation to you on December ninth of twenty twenty. And so if you have any questions, I'd be happy, happy to answer them or find somebody else who could if I can't.
Thank you, Wendy. Counselors, any question? Major project?
Wendy, one question I have is the, the size of the dwelling units in the new building. Do we have a rough estimate of what their approximate size will be?
We do. And I don't have that file open at the moment. I bet we have, I think, somebody from the development team here who might be able to pull that out.
Welcome, Brent. Well, Michael is here and Brandon.
Okay, thank you.
While we're waiting, the second question I had would, would be what, what are the primary benefits of the Lead? Lead Gold Certification.
The primary benefits?
Yeah, and for this project, what, what are, what are, what is, what is that providing to the, the building in terms of its environmental values?
All the specifics of that again are probably going to be better answered by the architects in this case. But I would say the increased energy efficiency, the increase in benefits for utility usage and perhaps the benefits of, I don't know if it's any better for Lead Gold than Lead Silver. But the waste management aspects of the construction that go along with that. But I'd welcome the experts in Lead to chime in on that answer too.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I got unmuted. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Brandon. Welcome.
Well, thanks, everyone. This is Brandon Smith, Vice President of Tailwind Group. So to answer the first quest, question. Were you looking for the, like the square footage of the units or how many of each unit type? I wasn't sure which one you were looking for.
I was mainly looking or asking about the, the square footage of the units.
Okay, so we have kind of a diverse mix of one, two and three bedrooms. So the one bedroom, the smaller almost studio type versions are going to be five hundred and forty square feet. And then we do have more of a premium one bedroom on the top floor that is just over a thousand square feet. And then our standard two by one, two bedroom, one bathroom is six hundred and twenty square feet. Our two by two is, we have two versions of that. One is seven hundred and sixty square feet. The other is eight hundred and ten square feet. And then we have on the top floor an eleven hundred and ten square foot two bedroom. And then our three bedroom, two bath units are one thousand and fifteen square feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Wendy or the developers?
No, just want, just thanks for the very thorough presentation. Very helpful.
Great. All right, well, let's go to the public. Would anyone like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. And we ask that you keep your comments three to five minutes. Welcome, Mikey, followed by Nicholas. Welcome, Mikey, followed by Nicholas.
So Tailwinds pays fees in lieu that support affordable housing. What exactly does this mean? The building that may be lead certified, but that seems as though recent developments such as the Chauncey Building and Edge and others do not take affordability into consideration. Is this something that the city council is okay with? It seems hypocritical to perpetually make proclamations about racism and other examples of performative activism. But when it comes to actual action, these groups such as Tailwinds is troubling. This is glorified trickle-down economics stating that the revenue from projects will be dispersed throughout the community. Also, I'm concerned about long-term impact of TIF funding and rebates as they tend to raise taxes and post cash flow issues. How will this be managed down the line once the building is built? It seems as though these TIF agreements merely kick the can down the road.
Thank you, Mikey. We're going to have Nicholas followed by Nancy.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, I wasn't actually expected to have the words taken out of my mouth because I was actually going to bring up the fee-in-lie issue again, although I'd like to take it in a slightly different direction, basically the same direction I always take it, which is that the developers are paying the fee-in-lie basically so as not to build affordable housing units. And the reason why the fee-in-lie, despite, you know, whatever the magnitude of the actual dollar amount is, is because it keeps pushing the time when those affordable housing units will be available to people further down the timeline. So you know, if you have a building that takes, you know, two to three years to complete, and then you finally get your, meaning the city's money out of it, and then you try to invest that into another project that takes two to three years to complete. So two to three years plus two to three years, that's four to six years. So what's irritating about this, and I know I always make this point, but I'm going to reiterate it, is how the developers, in other words, the people who seek to profit off of housing in Iowa City, they always get theirs first. But the people who actually have to deal with the conditions that those developers create, well, we always have to wait and wait and wait and wait and wait. And it's worth noting that within, that several very, very large developments have come before you just in the past year, and not a single one of them actually chose to build the units. Every single one decided to pay the fee-in-lie. Why? Because they don't actually want to build them. So you're going to have to come up with some way to actually more forcibly compel them to do it because they're just not going to do it. And it's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. We'll have Nancy followed by Karen.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Very good. As you know, this project has been in the works for roughly two years in our organization at the Iowa City Downtown District. And this is Nancy Byrd, by the way, has been following its progress and carefully talking to the local businesses that would be impacted by it as it moves through city processes. I would like to convey the shared sentiment of what a great project this is. It reaches preservation, sustainability, affordable housing, density, cultural, and retail goals of the city and the downtown district. The merits of the project are well-known, but I wanted to also share how important the construction phase of this project has become. There is no more critical time to invite construction workers downtown to commence demolition reconstruction on this important project. Our downtown is experiencing tremendous stress. It's way too quiet in our city center. And as the community continues to stay home, to stay healthy, we really need to do a lot of work to make sure that we can keep our retail stores and restaurants open so that we can, you know, basically make it through the impacts of COVID-19. So getting the first floor retrofitted for new businesses, as Wendy mentioned, moving revival back into the space will give the downtown a good leg up as businesses start to climb their way out of debt, are able to rehire all the employees that are unemployed across the community that have been lost, and allow for new opportunities to arise. The good news is that I believe that there really are some really great opportunities out there for these new commercial bay or retrofitted commercial bays. This project will go a long way to support our economic recovery from COVID. It's a positive economic impact across the community. I know there's a lot of controversy around TIF, but for those who really understand how it can be a great catalyst for getting projects built, but then also spreading out that impact, it's got very, very strong success in Iowa City for that. I mean, it's significant for downtown and the city at large. So I thank you very much for your favorable consideration of the project, and we look forward to getting that block, you know, creating an alive block again in downtown Iowa City. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nancy. Karen, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Karen Cobby, and I own a business in downtown Iowa City. I do not own the property. I do lease my space that I occupy. And, you know, sometimes I am very skeptical of downtown redevelopment and mostly because I think although I favor density increases downtown, I feel that some of the past projects have negatively impacted the feel of downtown in a way that doesn't move us forward. And if I, sometimes in my mind, I play this game where it's like, well, what would be a redevelopment project that I would support? And if I were to play that game, this one has so many elements that are really positive for a broad section of our community. The density is behind the building so that that on-the-street feel that people really appreciate about downtown is not negatively impacted. The smaller commercial spaces will allow a broader range of entrepreneurs and business owners, maybe first time, maybe not, to get in there and really kick up the activity level on that whole block for all of the businesses to just keep it very vital. Riverside Theater being in there is an awesome thing. I'm not sure people really understand how significant of a gift that the local historic overlay is for this project. It is a perpetual responsibility by the developer to preserve those storefronts. And downtown has such an eclectic array of eras and architectural styles that making sure we keep those as we progress downtown is really important. I'm very grateful that the city has a more accountable way of offering TIF programs to developers. It used to be that money was provided upfront, and then if the developer didn't live out the development agreement, the city had to extract that money back out. And so having the TIF be a rebate, and I'm glad the city has continued to do this, is a much more accountable way that you have to work the work you promised to do, and then you get the rebate. So I think this is much better than a clawback type of arrangement. I do share some of the concerns about affordable housing. I know that there are three choices for developers to get the TIF money to provide the fifteen percent. And I go back and forth as to what the best strategy is. Making sure that some of the units are provided on-site makes the building a mixed-income building. And we need to build mixed-income neighborhoods. And so by providing a fee in lieu of, there may be other sections of the neighborhood over time that are built with those fee-in-lie of monies, but it's not within that building. And when you have mixed income, you have mixed flavor, you have mixed energy, you have mixed lifestyles, backgrounds. And I'm sorry, my bird is talking to me. I'm hoping that's not too disturbing. Now, the disadvantage of offering those units on-site is that it's time-sensitive. And so it means that those units would only need to be affordable to the sixty percent of median income or lower for the life of the TIF. So that means we would only have fifteen years of that affordability. So with the fee in lieu of, we actually are going to get perpetual affordability through a city housing trust fund and through that program. So I really feel like the city needs to have that conversation a little more about should all developers get to choose the fee in lieu of? Because there are pros and cons each time. So I'm very supportive of this program. I hope the city will continue to look at and revise and update the TIF policies because the other part of the TIF policies for affordable housing or for housing is to offer student housing. And I really don't think the city should be or needs to be incentivizing student housing. I think it's much more organic even with the changing landscape about enrollment numbers. Even pre-COVID, those were expected to go down. So I hope that there'll be more discussion about that. So I hope that you'll support this and continue the discussion about housing as it relates to your TIF policies.
Thank you, Karen. Would anyone else like to address this topic? And Nicholas, I think your hand is still up. Would anyone else like to address this topic that hasn't already spoke to council? Seeing no one. All right, council discussion. Big project.
Well, I'll just start. I think the Economic Development Committee has spent a lot of time on this. We've seen a number of iterations of this over time as the developer has made, you know, some changes to what we finally see before us today. I think, you know, the people who've spoken already from the public have made, you know, a lot of really good points. I would, you know, agree with Karen Cobby's comments about, you know, the value of that historic preservation of those buildings downtown. I've mentioned that previously, that that ped mall is just such an important part of our downtown and to make sure that those buildings are preserved. And as she said, that's basically a forever commitment by those property owners. I think she raises some really interesting points about how we do the affordable housing, the pros and cons of fee in lieu of, you know, where do we want to offer those units? Does it make sense to put them in a student housing building, et cetera? So I mean, I would welcome the fact that we might have more conversation with that as we go forward. One other, a couple of really quick comments, just I think is a reminder to people. For in Iowa City, we have very low usage of TIF compared to the value of the property in the city and compared to the limitations by the state. We've always been, I think, very cautious with it, and our later policies have actually made us a little bit more cautious with it. And the rebates have worked really well for us. I would just remind people that, you know, we do have a nonprofit that reviews these projects for us and the gap before we commit to doing a TIF. And, you know, part of that is that we are, the city is the last money in, that the idea that these projects would not be built but for the contribution of the city with the TIF money, that there is a legitimate gap there that needs to be filled in order for the developers to take on the risk and to get a reasonable profit out of their project. So I am very much in support of this.
I'm. Go ahead, John.
Okay, thanks. I, you know, I was on the committee with Susan and Maza here, and I've been supporting the project as it has evolved. And I do appreciate all the comments we heard. I think, you know, there are a number of extraordinary benefits associated with this project. It is about as rich a palette of public benefit as I've seen in my time in Iowa City. It's really quite impressive. It also speaks, as I was watching the presentation, to what my comment on the student housing on Dubuque, you know, the Dubuque block, you can see the, in this project, the advantages of a more modular form of building frontage and how flexible what this project, this project would not be possible were it not for the flexibility of the existing buildings to change use, to be restructured by having the backsides removed while maintaining the front edge and building the taller building on the backside. All of that is possible because of the modules of the existing buildings. That's one of the reasons why older buildings, I think, are capable of being preserved is because they've been so adaptable over time. And they, in this case, I think you can see that strategy has worked out beautifully. On the affordable housing component, I think it is, it's a very complex issue. Earlier this evening, you know, at the work session when we were talking about Carson Farm, that site seems to me one where I, you know, expressed at the work session, doing the affordable housing on-site would be the approach I would prefer to take there. Here, you know, as Karen mentioned, one of the challenges we face is the long-term availability of the affordable housing. And unfortunately, in circumstances like this, it disappears in my mind in a relatively short period of time. So any strategy we can apply which increases the longevity, really for perpetuity, get it in kind of a land trust structure with our nonprofit affordable housing community, I think is a good strategy where it makes sense. And, you know, I think, as was mentioned, I think by Wendy, this will be folded in, the funds will be folded into our affordable housing revised strategy, which will be developing this year. I'm hoping that, you know, there will be ample time for the, that's this concept where we have that one point nine million dollars in affordable housing funding, we would be able to identify opportunities for using those funds so that we would be ready when the funds were available. So I do think this is a really interesting project. I like the way Karen put it about, you know, imagining a project which kind of preserves the spirit of the downtown while allowing new development to take place. I think this one's a really good example of that.
I agree with that, John. And Nicholas, I appreciate your comments. I have usually not been a fan ever of fees in lieu of for anything. I think oftentimes I've referred to it as like dangling carrots for the developers. But I think Karen Cobby brought a new light to that and really made it clear. And as John reiterated, even if they did do affordable units in that complex, it wouldn't be for perpetuity. It would just be for the fifteen or so years. Whereas this one point nine million of the fee can generate much more than that over the year. So that's a good way to, better way to look at it than just as a fee in lieu of. So I'm in favor of it, the project.
I will second everything that John Thomas said, really, and also what Corin Cobby, you know, said. Yes, I always was thinking that fee-on-law is good because of that reason, because it's not affordable forever. And I was thinking if we can just use this fee-on-law and build like something that affordable. Of course, if we waited, the thing that like one point eight million come build this year is not going to be the same thing like in six years as Nicholas mentioned. I just believe that, you know, we just need to really look at our affordable housing policy and change it. And I would love to see, especially in the downtown area, permanent affordability for affordable housing because, you know, downtown suddenly it will become only for certain class of people, students and professors and the people who can really rent in downtown. So we don't want to see that. Downtown is for everyone. That's why we really love to see a permanent affordability. And but in this case, you know, fifteen, even by the time that, you know, the TIF time come up ended, we don't have affordable housing in that building anymore. So it is really challenging. But the solution for this, it will be just changing our affordable housing policy. And, you know, looking forward to have permanent affordability when it come to affordable housing.
Mayor, if I may, just to offer some clarification on the affordable housing payment, the one point nine million approximately is due at the time the building permit is pulled. So that city will have that money upfront in this project. It will not be something that takes fifteen years to collect. It will not be something that even takes two years to collect. It will be collected at the time of building permit. City Council has the authority to put that money to work as soon as you feel you're ready to. As Wendy had mentioned, our plan was to solicit some feedback from the Staff Steering Committee that we're pulling together to help us in developing the plan. And we understand the council has an interest in trying to keep those dollars downtown. The other thing I'd offer is, you know, we've taken a number of different approaches to our recent downtown projects that have involved TIF. We have public housing, permanent affordable housing in some of those. We have public housing, permanent affordable housing in some of those structures, um such as the Chauncey and Augusta Place. And uh with some of the projects we've done offsite. So Augusta Place had a mix of um onsite and offsite um uh properties that that they worked into that deal. And even the Edge in Riverfront Crossings um had a mix of fee in lieu and onsite. So you can take about any of those projects and and they're all kind of put together a little bit different way. But we have explored permanent affordable housing as part of it. In this case, again, uh we thought that we could stretch those dollars uh a little bit further and with an eye towards uh more permanence with the fee in lieu. But I do want to let you know that those dollars are available almost immediately. And if the council sees opportunities, uh we can uh, we can pursue those fairly quickly.
I think it's also, it's also important as we consider those who would be interested in and able to use affordable housing in the in the direct downtown area to include students who can't afford necessarily a lot of the the pricier student housing. So I mean, there there's a, there's a broad range of people uh who I could imagine if we, if we could put those dollars to use building affordable housing in the area could be uh could end up as tenants.
Yeah, I really appreciate the context of this discussion that that Wendy was able to provide, both with this specific um TIF request and also kind of the the history of some of the other projects that Jeff just brought in. During our work session, we spent a good amount of time talking about, um, you know, implementing the policy that's in place for the project that's in front of us. And I think this is a a good example where we can look at other downtown TIF-supported projects when the TIF policy wasn't what it is now. And the fact that we are gaining additional benefits because that policy was revised pretty recently and we're able to to craft an agreement that has a lot more public benefit than than we would have even, you know, maybe a handful of years ago. So I I think, you know, a lot of the concerns or questions that I would have had with this project have been answered frankly over the years that it's been developing. And like I said, we have the policy that's in front of us that gives the different options. I agree with the fee in lieu for the affordable housing in this particular project. Because one of the alternatives is offsite for this particular developer. And, you know, in our packet, there was an indication that that would have been at the Tailwinds Project, which is, you know, right by where I am and not not close to downtown. And I think having affordable housing and the opportunity for permanent affordable housing through um what uh what we can do with these funds near downtown is really important. So, yeah, I just a- agree with what all my colleagues have said and I'm grateful for the care that's gone into this project over the last couple of years.
If I could just add one last thing to kind of piggyback on what Counselor Berger said and and others with the fee in lieu of. Keep in mind that oftentimes when we have this cash, we are able to leverage that. Whether it, you know, whether it ends up in a Lytec, the low-income tax credits, you know, project or other state or federal grants that our nonprofit partners manage to get. So, you know, go back and look at some of the the memos um that the staff has provided us. And I'm trying to think of the last one we got of of maybe it was our last fiscal year. You know, how much are a million dollars um in affordable housing funds? I don't even dare guess, but it leveraged maybe two to three million. Jeff, you probably can tell us off the top of your head, maybe it was a lot more than that. But, you know, that one million that we as a city put in, we were able able to leverage a lot more money through state and federal monies and our nonprofit partners.
So I'm gonna be supportive of this project. I think everybody said it great. When it comes down to the being able to live downtown, I think that's a great opportunity that we really do need to figure out. On a larger scale, there are some um permanent housing, which is great, that the city has uh been able to obtain. But I think um, you know, the Affordable Housing Planning Group, I'm looking and expecting great things from them to bring to us. So this is a a great opportunity. I think um I did have some questions about um the new uh the tenants, El Patron and Martinis. Are they not wanting to be there anymore? Or why aren't they gonna be downtown in this space?
I think Mayor, El El Patron's been closed for some period of time. That space has been vacant for for a number of months. And uh I believe um Martinis closed uh maybe, maybe a month or two ago. The developers or the owners may may be able to speak to that more if you want more details. But I don't think it's a matter of not being invited into that project. I think it's more of just the there's their circumstances at the current time.
Okay, all right. Yeah, anything, any more comments on this item from counselors? We're ready for roll call, please.
Taylor? Yes. Teak?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Motion passed a seven to zero. Item fifteen, rezoning at one oh nine, one eleven, one fifteen, one seventeen and one twenty-one East College Street. Local historic landmark, ordinance rezoned approximately point fifty-five acres. A property from central business zone to CB ten with a historic district overlay for a property located at one oh nine, one eleven, one fifteen, one seventeen and one twenty-one East College Street. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So move, Weiner.
Second, Mims.
Would anyone from the public, public like to address this topic? Welcome, Nicholas.
I just wanted, since this is a related issue, I know this isn't specifically the TIF. I just have two words for you. Forest View. You guys remember Forest View? Well, I know you can't respond to me. So here's the thing, Forest View is completely stalled. Another major TIF project, um a previous council. In fact, many of the people currently on council, you are all very happy about it, just in the same way that you're very, very happy about this project as well. But you also recall that in the Forest View project, there were actually mobile home residents who were very, very dependent.
Nicholas, we we need you to keep your comments to the item on hand, please.
Well, you're not gonna listen to me anyway, so just, I'll shut up.
Would anyone else like to address this topic? CNN one council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teak?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed a seven to zero. Item number sixteen, announcement of vacancies new. And this is applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. April sixth, twenty twenty-one through April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Applications must be received by five P M Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one. Items number, item number seventeen is an announcement of vacancies previous. And applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill a unexpired term. Applications must be received by five P M January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustments, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. And this is a licensed electrician. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, North Side, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And this is a time for item number eighteen, which Ryan, I think I saw you. There you are. Great. Welcome. This is U I S G.
Good evening, council. Again, not too many things to update as we are on our last week of winter break. But students will be returning for classes to start next week on Monday. And it'll again look like, very much like last semester, mostly online classes, but with some in-person. And as some of you may know, but as the community might not, spring break was canceled, which is why winter break was an extra week long. So, you know, spring break, but there are two um extra mental health off days that one in March and one in April uh that the university is offering to uh give students somewhat of a break. But other than that, um probably won't be too many more updates until school starts again. That's all for this evening. Thanks, council.
Thank you. Item nineteen, city council information.
I'll start. I I hope that uh members of the community have been able to uh find ways to commemorate the the life and legacy of of such a great man as as the Reverend Martin Luther King. Rather than a peaceful march of people, as has been done in years past, it was decided this year to have a unity parade, truth, love and justice unity parade of vehicles. I participated in that and Mayor was there also. And it was a lot of fun. It was estimated probably about fifty vehicles. And and we drove, I think, I about fourteen, fifteen miles uh all around town, different parts of town. So it was very enjoyable. And um I'd also like to thank the police, fire and ambulance personnel that that participated with their vehicles also. That was a lot of fun. Next, I'd like to just remind the people that, excuse me, the mayor recently, I don't want to steal your thunder here, extended the mask mandate uh till the end of May. And not to sound like a broken record, I know uh this message has been repeated over and over again. But please, please, please wear a mask when you are out and about uh and wear it correctly. Remember to social distance. Wash your hands and keep your hands away from your uh eyes, nose and mouth. Uh and just stay uh safe and stay well. Lastly, uh just, we talked about earlier, uh joint entities meeting is, uh I believe that's Monday, the twenty-fifth. And earlier I'd mentioned a suggestion for a topic, but I think I'd like to rescind that suggestion unless people, some, you know, some of the group also want to to do it. I I'd uh talked about um making a statement about not tolerating intimidation or violence in our communities. But um we can talk about that later and see how things go this week around the country. That's all.
The Guide Link Center is uh opening up. They are, uh have the winter shelter part open now and getting the rest of it ready. The governor and um the head of Department of Human Services Director Garcia have confirmed that they will be here to visit the Guide Link Center on January twenty-ninth. There will be limited participation. The guest list is pretty short because of COVID restrictions. As the city's representative to that committee, over the last few years, I have been invited to attend and will to represent the city. So they will be here uh Friday morning, uh January twenty-ninth to view the Guide Link Center. So looking forward to getting it all up and running. I've talked to some of the folks down there and they're excited and they're anxious. And uh there's just, you know, lots of, lots of work to do and lots of, you know, uncertainty about usage at the beginning until people really get to know that it's there. And certainly will be, you know, having some conversations, I think, with the governor and DHS Director Garcia when they're here about the need for funding um as this continues. So it'll be interesting.
I just wanted to mention that today has been a National Day of Remembrance for the four hundred thousand souls that we have lost, the four thousand, hundred thousand empty chairs and tables. And I would hope that people can just take a moment to think about that. Put on your lights tonight if you have not. And realize that we've, what all that we have lost in the past year.
All right. Oh, great. We are moving on to staff updates. Item number twenty, city manager, any updates from you?
Nothing's nightmare.
Great. Eleanor, well, actually, I'll go to our assistant city manager, Ashley.
I was just gonna say you could skip me. I don't have anything this evening, but it's good.
All right.
Thanks.
Great to you.
Mayor, thanks.
Great. Our city clerk?
Nope, nothing from me.
Great. Item number twenty-one, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So move, Taylor.
Move by Taylor, seconded by uh Salee. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are done for the evening. Continue to celebrate Dr. King this week. Great. Bye.
Good night, everybody.